Before we start this meeting tonight, Fred, will you lead us in a prayer?
Good evening, Father, regarding before you. This evening, we thank you, Father God, for the things in his favor that you do our city. We send you, Father God, in your good faith as a man, in this and guide us through every step we face. We pray, Father God, for all our cities, all our people, our country, and to present and to say that if you guide them, Father God, that you draw closer to yourselves, and that if you give a counsel, wisdom, Father God, to make decisions that will be good and beneficial for the state of the province. Thank you, Father God, for doing this. Thank you so much, Father God.
Ah, we'll call this meeting ordered at six o'clock, straight up and down. Local.
Mayor Hicks?
Present.
Councilor Rodarte.
Present.
Councilor Garcia.
Here.
Councilor Cerro.
Present.
Councilor Padilla.
Where did Fred go?
Fred, here.
Okay, Fred's present. Will you please stand and join me in the pleasurable regents?
United Nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public, for its standards, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda of, what was it? Four two twenty twenty? Or the, or the agenda for tonight, I should say.
There you go. I second. Fred, second. Councilor Rodarte.
Aye.
Councilor Garcia. Councilor Cerro.
Yes.
Councilor Maya.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens to address the council. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, first one, hearing item. Obviously, we don't have nobody here for hearing. It's basically closed meeting. Did we get anybody saying against it in the, at the city council, Laura? Did we get anybody saying they didn't want this?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
Uh, Mayor Hicks?
Yeah.
Uh, this is Don, uh, I guess you guys can hear me. Uh, as you, as you're aware, about a year ago, you guys, you gave us a go ahead to apply for you, two USDA applications, one for the water system and one for the wastewater system. Uh, we've, we've fulfilled and completed those applications. They were just turned in two weeks ago. One of the requirements is to hold a public hearing for in case there's any discussion or any comments uh, that the public wants to give, or if the council has any questions in regard to where we're at uh, on that particular project. So the two applications were turned in two weeks ago. Uh, we're going for two USDA grants. Uh, Mark Nassy with Wilson and Company is online right now. If you guys have any questions or you guys want to have any discussion in regard to those two applications.
Any questions?
Are these federal grants or are these state?
They are USDA federal grants.
Okay.
Correct. Uh, one of the requirements prior to, or to turn in with the application was a PER in the wastewater and a PER in the water system. So we've completed those two, two PERs of which uh, we, we identified the most critical issues in the old grants area. So that's, that's the targeted first area because that's, obviously that's the oldest part of town. Uh, so anyway, the, the two applications are in and it's for the water and wastewater and they are federal grants.
Okay.
Hey, Don, what's?
Yes.
What do you mean, West Old Grants? What about?
Uh, we had to divvy up the project in phases and the first phase, we just named it Old Grants. That's, you and I know that as a Loma. That's, I, I guess that's what we could have called it with the, the Loma because that's the oldest part of town. Uh, Mark Nassy, he's on board. Would you like to give any comment?
Yeah, that's the long Santa Fe Avenue there. And um, it's a replacement um, for water and sewer line. Um, that's the oldest part of Grants that was built in the thirties and forties. And uh, we're continuing on with uh, Don's group to evaluate the uh, several other areas throughout the city uh, from the west to the east.
Now, on, on this grant, Donald, what are we talking on that west end of town? Are we talking finishing that project from Walters up to the where we did the engineering work that we already paid for, but of course it's probably no good no more because it's been a while.
Yeah, this is totally unrelated. What we're looking at is the water and wastewater systems and the most critical areas. So in the PER, uh, while Matt, Mark, you want to go and explain about how we found the most critical areas?
Yeah, you know, your fire department did a um, photo study on some of your hydrants and they have some low pressures. So we're going to increase some of the li- uh, line sizes along uh, Savit, Santa Fe Avenue, go across the interstate there on the west side of town to help some low pressures in the quail run area. Um, it was identified by Don and Mark Tesh. And um, it would be, these grants, uh, these loan grants are five million dollars each, just under five million dollars. And they should be approved and processed through USDA by mid um, May or by the end of May. And you'll know for sure the actual, you know, uh, if it's been approved and then we'll finish the design up to replace the sewer and water line um, in that old grants area on the west end of town.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll declare the hearing shutdown at six oh seven P M. And we'll open up the, the public meeting. First item for the public meeting is public comment and discussion on our charter compliance. Obviously, there's nobody here to say we're not compliant, but we are. So that's a good thing. Approval of a regular city council meeting for around minutes from four to twenty twenty.
I make a motion that we approve uh, the city council meeting for eight to ten point two.
Second.
Very second.
Councilor Rodarte.
Aye.
Councilor Garcia. Councilor Lucero.
Yes.
Councilor Padilla.
Yes.
Hopefully, guys, next month, we won't be doing this no more. We'll all be here in the chamber together. Okay? Um, yeah, it may not be the first meeting, but we will be back in the chamber next month. Okay, next item. Audit report, physical year nineteen. Kimberly, you gonna hell that? Is the auditor online?
This is David. I'm here.
I don't, I don't see no face.
Can you hear me?
I could hear you, but I don't see no face.
How's that? You see me?
Are you David Baca?
Yep.
No, I can't see you.
All right. Can you hear me?
Mark, are you gonna put our PowerPoint on?
Uh, I, I'm on my iPhone. I don't know if I can run it from my iPhone. Can you run it from there?
I need the uh, he's on the iPhone. I need the bottom presentation. He said he's on iPhone and camera.
Or should I try getting on my laptop and running both at the same time?
On the, oh.
Smile, Donald, come on, dude. That's better, eh? That's better, man.
I can tell you the same thing.
I'm good, dude.
Well, I know you are.
How long you been growing that beard? Pick your head up a little bit. Let me see that. How long you been growing that?
Seriously?
Seriously, how long you been growing that?
Two years.
Two years, so you got a whole year on me. Okay, I'm gonna catch up and I'm gonna pass you, buddy.
Oh, okay. All right.
Did you see Rick's trying to catch up to us, bro?
Yeah, he's a little behind.
A little bit wider than mine and yours, though.
I'm a little bit over there, miho. Miho.
G and square away.
We'll start calling you the smart twins. Yeah.
Do you want me to just go ahead and start?
Yeah, go ahead and start. We'll flip through the, we got the pages here in front of us. Go ahead.
Okay.
Well, you ready to flip a change there, David? Let us know.
All right, so right now I'm on the second page which says modified opinion. Every.
Okay.
So normally you want an unmodified opinion. It's the best you can get, but in this case we have a modified opinion. And the reason we have a modified opinion, which is a little bit below what you want is because uh, we have problems with our capital assets and it's been an ongoing situation here for a couple of years. The city is not maintaining uh, records relevant to capital assets. And many days are in the process of getting everything into your new software, but you have, not, not all your capital assets are in your software yet and you haven't done an inventory in a while and you haven't reconciled your records. So that's why there's a modified opinion on the capital assets. So in the same regard, I mean, we'll talk about it later, but there's an audit finding on capital assets because of these records were not properly maintained. Any question?
Figure out how far back that went?
The audit finding was written in two thousand seventeen is when it first showed up. So it's, so it's for the seventeen audit, the eighteen audit and the nineteen audit. Our capital assets have not been reconciled.
But they're reconciled now, right?
I don't know. Uh, it's.
Kimberly says, yeah, they will be. Okay, thank you, Kimberly.
Yeah, I know they were working on, doing an inventory. I know they were working on inputting the data into the new software. And I know they're working with the, the other accounting firm to get everything reconciled. So hopefully by June thirtieth of twenty, it'll be done. But as of June thirty nineteen, it was not done.
Is that the reason why we have a modified opinion is because all the data hasn't been in, put in place, is what you're saying?
That's correct. It, it's not been reconciled. It's not, it's, it's basically, we couldn't audit it in the state that it was in. So we're saying everything else was good, but we just could not come to an opinion on capital assets. There just wasn't enough support. I mean, it could be wrong. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, let's switch pages. Let's go to the next page. So in our audit report, uh, there's three audit reports. There's the independent auditors report, which was, we just talked about, and that's the frontal report. And we gave you a modified opinion. And then there's another report towards the end of the audit report called the GAGUS report, which is a governmental auditing standards report. And in that report, we list your compliance with um, state and federal compliance. And then the other report on your right hand side is called the report on compliance for each medal, each major federal program. So that's what we call a single audit. You haven't had a single audit in a while. So what triggers a single audit is if you have seven hundred and fifty thousand or more in federal dollars expended each year. So for nineteen, you guys hit that threshold, so we had to do a single audit for FY nineteen. And that triggers a third audit report, just on federal compliance. So on federal.
Laura, that's the stuff that Mr. Jenkins was talking about. All the federal compliance with the federal dollars.
So, yeah, several of the money that we get, pots of money are federal. So if we get over seven hundred thousand, or did he say seven fifty? Then you, they do a, a better check on your finances.
Okay. I'm good with that, since we're not in with it. I wasn't good with it before she came. Go ahead, there, Dave.
So with respect to federal awards, uh, last year we audited the clean water program and we did not have any audit findings related to that program, so that's good. Okay, let's switch pages. Matters to be communicated. So our auditing standards require us to communicate with the members of governance at the end of the audit. And one of the things we're required to communicate to the governing board is whether there was any significant difficulties that we encountered during the audit. And I'm happy to report, we did not have any significant difficulties that were required to just let you know about that.
Lot of work.
Next page. Matters to be communicated. Another thing we're supposed to talk to you about is if there's any significant audit adjustments. So we did, you guys did have another auditing firm help you get to the audit. Uh, we went in and however, we did come up with some adjustments that we still had to make on top of what they helped Kimberly put together. So we had a sizable adjustment to your taxes receivable and to your accounts payable at your, at, at the end of the year. Kimberly has agreed to those adjustments and you guys, the city, has now posted those adjustments. So the financials on your end match the financials on our end. Any questions on this?
You know, I appreciate you coming in because I'm asked auditors to not do their job. That's why we brought you in.
Okay.
So I appreciate you guys doing.
And you guys are making progress and hopefully, you know, after this next audit, you guys will be back in shape. But you know, still right now, we still got to get our capital assets fixed. Uh, you guys are working on your, still completing your conversion to a new software program and that's always a big job. And I think you guys are still working on the tail end of that.
Yes, we are.
Okay, let's go to the next page. Disagreements with management. So once again, this is a required closure that we're supposed to discuss with the governing board. And I'm happy to report, we had no disagreements with manager, with management. Uh, Lori, Laura and Kim were just, you know, great to work with. Uh, they bent over backwards to help us and it was a good experience.
Cool. It's been a good experience for me, too.
Okay, let's go to the next page. This page is called resolved findings. So this page is good that it lists uh, five audit findings on this page. And all the findings on this page were corrected as of June thirtieth nineteen, so that's a good thing. So some of the problems we had before was cash wasn't reconciled finally. We had problems with cash disbursement. Um, we had a prior period adjustment and we had a late audit on all that's been corrected. So that's good. Okay, let's go to the next page. Current year findings. So we did have uh, four audit findings this year. Uh, capital assets. So that was a very serious finding. It's such a serious finding that we call it a material weakness. And that's why we had to modify the audit opinion, which we discussed earlier. The next audit finding is deficit fund balance. And that means this, several of your funds had a negative balance at year end. I'm thinking a lot, a, a lot of this is attributable to you guys were in the middle of a software conversion and I don't think you guys had the opportunity to clean up all your accounts the way you wanted them to be. So I'm hoping by this next audit, um, we'll have funds that don't have a deficit fund balance. And you can either, Kim can fix that by transferring monies over from the general fund to some of these other funds that have a negative fund balance. But you guys had so many problems you were dealing with last year, this one kind of fell through the cracks.
You bet you got something, kid. Yeah.
Me and actually this time about this this morning, one of the problems is the F A, the report that we're gonna go over later, they want us to incorporate on a cash basis. The problem is, at the end is weird, it didn't have like a pool and like a house payable, money to go out, and the house people will have to be in. So we actually, we have payroll, you know, after.
Yeah, you bet you.
Pay, we're gonna have to pay for the next month. Well, the reports that I just did, the F A all year long are cash, so they don't do any of those numbers that are gonna have to be saved in Hawaii. And so I didn't know that. Um, and so that's what actually that's the audit finding, the outside, the other accounting firm who's been helping us. They helped to figure those out. This year, I don't know.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, so our next uh, audit finding was budget overage. Uh, our fund twenty one four hundred is lodgers tax fund. And we exceeded budget. We spent more money than we budgeted. So that was probably just an oversight, probably year end. We just need to pay a little more attention to make sure that our budget is in compliance. Any comment on that, Kim?
Do what?
Any comment on that?
It's kind of the same thing in the back. It's not, I think it's passing the floor, but it's because we, we make sure that our cash account, our piles are coming, we get to the end and for over, it, it didn't ever even occur to me that it was during the day, but that's, that actually. And the other thing is, the first thing that happened this year, we have to have to look at the overage and, and the past type of thing. We actually use the N I for the third quarter, so we're gonna be, uh, be careful with that, but.
Okay, then, um, the, can you hear me?
Hang on just a minute, Dave.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Approved by the state. And so that will happen. The okay, if we do over our budget, we just have to get approval on it, but the council has voted state and that one.
And that's when we do these. Any questions? So far? Go ahead, Dave.
All right, uh, the, the final finding uh, has to do with the, the completion of your federal form I nine. Uh, we did a sample of twenty five personnel files. And in three of those files, um, the I nines were not completed properly. For example, one employee did not sign his I nine, uh, another employee did not date his I nine. And then the other form, there was no dates by the employee or the employer indicating when that form was generated. Um, in the scheme of things, this is a really minor finding, but as auditors are required to report to anything that we do find. So this one is easily correctable and I'm sure it'll be corrected by the next audit.
I'm sure it's already been corrected.
Next page. Thank you. I'm open for any questions that you guys may have at this point.
Questions, Fred?
Okay, uh, the only thing that I was uh, thinking about concerning that, so a lot of, a lot of the stuff that you discussed here can, can easily be made with the data, data input and adjustments that um, that you, uh, you brought out?
Correct.
So, so it's, it's not, there's nothing major in there that we, that we need to address, correct?
Um, I guess I'm not certain how far you guys are on correcting the capital asset finding. Kim probably needs to address that and let us know. Kim?
Can I address?
You bet.
We have two new counts in our particular, and the store gets one who's got that.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a, a kind of a, a little extreme on a capital asset? When I started, December seventeen, the fiscal, the, the eighteen audit was, just seventeen audit, like, at that point. It was already behind twenty five. And so we didn't get it completed until, um.
Now, what was, what was that due to?
That was due to turnover and stay out.
That was due to American way of cleaning houses.
And the end of the audit, the lead, the default, just it's active that all of them didn't have any cash. We were gonna, we were ready. Then those nine countries played into the county's property. Those didn't do the work. Well, what can you do?
Okay.
Okay. Do what?
I'll follow you there.
Okay, so when I came on board, I, I know that was, she, she. And so I was then the member that's wearing my accounting software, but they're not there.
And so I was then the member that's working my accounting software, but they're not there.
Yeah, so it's as of the, as of the third quarter, so nine months in, it's 583,000. For the year, I actually have the budget here, it's 861,000.
Eight hundred and sixty.
And we're at 8.1 million.
Yeah, see, that's, we're good.
There's no motion, there's no motion, basically. Yeah, but I want to, I want to show you the next report, real quick. The next report is called Income Statement. Um, this is a new report that our, uh, actually, I gave it to you guys last quarter. It's what our new accounting software can do. It just breaks it down a little bit better for you as far as what the budget was, what our year-to-date activity is, and then what our remaining budget is. So basically, all those numbers on the right should be around 25%. Um, you know, if they're like, the expenses in the general fund are a little bit over, but that's okay because of all the projects that we have. Um, so this is just kind of something, just for you to look through, you have questions or whatever. It's a little bit different picture than the first report is directed from the state. This is, this is just from our software, so anyways. And if there's no questions for that, then I can do the motion, yes.
Any questions? One more.
I think we're looking good.
One twice the total.
We're reaching with 1670.
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 201620.
1670.
1670, sorry.
Second.
My second.
Sarah second.
Yes, sir, yes.
Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Councilor Rorodin?
Yes.
Next one. Resolution 201670. Seventy-one. Did we just decide to skip seventy-one? We're good with that.
I don't remember.
Um.
Don't worry about it.
We don't have.
Yeah, we probably did, so don't give a shit. I just thought I asked.
That one, this one.
The G O bond, I think Melendris and Melendris is on.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go ahead and talk to you about this. So the council is aware that you put a tax before the general public for voting recently, and we passed the general obligation bond. So this is a resolution authorizing the sale of bonds so that we can begin that project.
Questions?
That's the one that was passed by the voters, right?
Yes.
Right, and in case you forgot, it's, it's for a total of 2,500,000. Uh, 1,500,000 is for water lines and construction related to water lines, and then the 1 million is for sewer lines.
Now, there, there's a timeframe there, Laura, from the moment that we, that it was passed till the, till the moment it begins to come in, right?
Um, I'm not sure, Linda might be able to answer that for us, but... Are you still on the line, Linda?
Because it was my understanding that it takes about a year for all that, all that financing to start coming in.
You're probably right. Um, it takes a while to get everything processed. So this is our notice that we're gonna start selling, and we have another item on the agenda where we're gonna be applying to the NMFA so that we can have them process the, these transactions for us. So, um, it is a process and it takes, we're probably six months away from having everything taken care of.
Okay. Six months away from having it taken care of, probably. Six months away from money. A whole year before we see any money.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. 201672.
Yeah, I make a motion to, um, move the Resolution 201672.
Second.
Okay.
Councilor Paliya with the second. Councilor Rorodin?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia? Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Next one. City Constitution, okay. You wanna have a question or you want to?
Yes, this is related to the bonds as well, and it's a resolution to put in an application for financial assistance to the New Mexico Finance Authority. And they will be helping us process the funding for these water and sewer line projects.
Is that, that was related to the previous one, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, this one.
Yes.
State financial.
Okay.
Do you have questions?
No.
Red, Paliya?
No.
No, Eric?
No, I'm fine.
I'll entertain a motion, Resolution 201673.
I'll make a motion, we fi- uh, pass Resolutions 201673.
Second.
My second.
Councilor Rorodin?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia? Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Thank you. Next one.
So this next item is related to our health insurance, and it's gonna be Resolution 201674, but we have on the line Kyle Shoemaker and Lisa Bloom, who are with Hub, and they'll do a short presentation for you. Uh, Michelle with the Human Resources has been researching options for health insurance. We've, the city has been with Maritain Insurance for ages, and we, she has been looking into other options, and we have found that we could save quite a lot for the city's part of the premium as well as the, our staff's premium. So I'll turn it over to Kyle.
Hello?
Kyle, are you there?
I can't tell. Kyle, are, I see, maybe he's getting on the line now. Kyle, are you on the line? Kyle? Yeah. We're gonna call and see if he's having trouble dialing in. Basically, the insurance would be switched over from Maritain to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, currently, the city pays 90% of the premium, and the staff pays 10%. Um, we're gonna be saving quite a lot. Um, I'm gonna have you, um, there is a sheet, that's a spreadsheet with colors, you can keep going through. Um, Mark, keep going. Keep going. Oh, Mark's got you on mute.
Hear that, Mark unmuted him.
Okay, so I guess you can go back to the beginning, is he unmuted?
Can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you, Kyle.
Try it again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Mark, can you put the presentation up?
Yep, I've been listening the, uh, the entire time, but I guess I couldn't speak.
Okay, we got you now.
All right. So I'm gonna share my screen, um, can everyone see that?
It's loading, there we go.
And do that to me, okay. So, um, first thing, I would just like to introduce Lisa Bloom and myself. Uh, we both work out of Albuquerque, New Mexico, for a company called Hub International. We're a complete solution for all lines of insurance coverage, but Lisa and I focus on employee benefits. So working with Laura and Michelle, we have come up with what, um, like a pretty appealing solution to, to help out, um, the city, not only with funds, but with some ease of access to care. So we're just gonna go over that today, if that's all right. Quick agenda of the PowerPoint, and here we go. So, um, high level here, I know that, uh, you know, this was supposed to be over pretty soon, and you've talked about a lot, so I won't go into too much detail unless you would like me to. Um, what you'll see on the left is your current plan design. You are currently with Maritain and have a $500 deductible. Um, at the bottom, you'll see an estimated annual premium. This is based on the total amount of employees that you currently have, and it's about 1.4 million dollars. Now, our solution, um, was to, to switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and what you're gonna see is that deductible is showing 2,500, and I know that can be scary, but we've come up with a reimbursement plan. So basically, the, any member will not see any difference. They are still gonna see a $500 deductible, and actually, a lower medical out-of-pocket. Um, any numbers you see at the top, the 2,500, the 5,000, the 4,500, and the 9,000, uh, from the Blue Cross Blue Shield perspective, all of those will be subtracted by 2,000 with the reimbursement plan that we've devised. So, um, you know, you'll also see some other good things, like the emergency room is now gonna be a $200 copay versus a 20% co-insurance. Um, co-insurance for, you know, ER visits can be thousands of dollars. Um, and you will see at the very bottom line, moving to Blue Cross with this reimbursement plan is gonna save $460,000, but that's not including some reimbursements that we've estimated, which I'll go over on the next page. Does anyone have any questions on this first page?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, my question is, uh, you know, you mentioned there that there's a reimbursement figure there. Uh, the employee himself, how's he gonna see it when he gets like a medical bill or something like that? Because the previous plan shows $500 deductible, this one shows 2,500. How's he gonna see it?
Correct. So let me switch over to this next page here, and, and what we've kind of devised is, um, it's called a, a health reimbursement arrangement. Um, so what's gonna end up happening is that employee is going to see, um, be responsible for the first $500 of that 2,500 deductible. After that, um, we have found a solution with a third-party administrator to administer some reimbursements that the city would basically be reimbursing directly to the employees. Now, the benefit in this is that, as you can see, um, from an employee-only perspective with Maritain, it's $800, $866 a month, where with Blue Cross, it's only 599. Now, so to further answer your question, the, the second two, or the last $2,000 of that 2,500 dollar deductible will all be reimbursed from grants to the employees. Now, we've done some estimates, and I've, I've estimated these on the side of caution, as in worst-case scenario, as in I've never seen it before, and if we did 30% of your total members, meaning 52 reimbursements, okay? That's gonna be 104,000, which is that number in the red that you're seeing. So this is still creating an annual savings of 300,000 by switching to the Blue Cross plan. But not only are you saving money, currently with Maritain, Sibula General Hospital is not in-network. So, uh, by switching to Blue Cross Blue Shield, you would also have Sibula General Hospital in your network. So you would not have to travel out of your, out of your town to receive in-network costs. Is this, is this reimbursement kind of making sense?
I wanted to kind of look at it from the employee's side as to, because sometimes, you know, you look at your insurance plans, and, uh, they all look great to you, to you, to a person, and, and this, this is something that's gonna be pretty much presented to employees so they can understand what, what, what we're doing here, right?
Exactly, yeah, actually, I will, um, you know, hoping that, that, um, we're able to be in-person at the time of this presentation. If not, we have multiple tools to communicate this otherwise, but I will be the one that will be communicating how this works to the employees. And like I said, the way that we've devised this is after $500, there's nothing out-of-pocket for them for that deductible. And that's regarding an employee only, right? So, um, everything else will, will then be taken care by the third-party administrator, as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield of New Mexico.
Any other questions?
Who is the third-party administrator?
The third-party administrator is called Discovery Benefits, and they are, um, one of Hub's, um, preferred vendors when it comes to administering, um, things called HSAs, as well as reimbursement plans, as well as COBRA, which is something that we've looked into. But, um, it actually seems like, um, after speaking with Laura and Michelle, that, um, the third-party administrator may not be necessary in regards to the reimbursements, which would eliminate, um, additional costs, it's only about $3 per person. But, um, it seems like Laura, um, and Michelle feel like there is a privacy officer in, in the, in the room that would be able to administer these reimbursements themselves, which would actually, um, streamline the process. Is that, that's what we decided, right, Laura?
Yes.
So the, the third-party administrator, don't they be necessary if, if this wasn't, if this was not going to be able, um, to be handled in-house with, with ease? If we do have a solution, though, if, if it becomes too difficult, we'll just call them right up, and they're, and they're aware.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Of course. Um, so the next slide I'm gonna go over real quickly is some of the changes to the, the dental and the life insurance. You will see that the dental insurance is going up a little bit. Um, 16,000, obviously, in comparison to 300,000 we're talking about, is pretty miniscule. Um, but we're gonna have identical, identical benefits on your dental. And then, um, for life insurance, everything is gonna be the same, a $50,000 flat life policy, except we're gonna be saving $6,000 there. On the next page, we have vision, again, identical, um, rate, identical, um, benefit plan design. The one difference you're gonna see is with Blue Cross Blue Shield, they're gonna guarantee these rates for 48 months. So that's, that's pretty generous to not see a rate fluctuation for four years on any, any plan. So we're pretty excited about that. The best thing about bundling everything with Blue Cross is we're gonna save an additional 2% on your medical premiums. So if we choose to go forward with the medical, dental, vision, and life, we're gonna offset another, uh, roughly $20,000 in savings.
Do our employees currently have, hell, a vision and dental, Laura?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what we did during the bidding process was just tried to line all of your benefits to match exactly as the way they were for minimum disruption to the employees. Now, um, the only thing that's gonna see the difference is the reimbursement plan, which they really won't see a difference. Um, and as well as they're gonna actually gain Sibula General as, as an in-network facility, which I hope is, uh, pretty relieving to not have to drive to Albuquerque.
True.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Right now, uh, Maritain is, is not, uh, accepted by Sibula General?
No.
No, Maritain is not seen as an in, in-house provider, basically, by Maritain. Uh, Sibula General is not, so this would be an added benefit.
And in addition, um, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, being that you're outside of what they consider their core four-county area, you can actually come to Albuquerque and see Presbyterian, as well as UNMH, as, um, in-network facilities. Now, generally, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, as someone who lives in Albuquerque, I cannot go to Press or UNM as an in-network, it would be out-of-network for me. But being outside the four-county area, if you needed some specific procedure done at UNMH that Sibula Gen was not able to, to handle, you could go there for in-network costs, which is a really big, um, added value.
Great.
I know I kind of zoomed through this, I just didn't want to take too much of your time. I know you're handling, handling a lot. Do you have any questions, please let me know? Yes. Hello?
Barely.
Can you hear me?
A little.
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Shoemaker, how does this work with mail-in pharmacy? Does this, how does your, your plan work with mail-in pharmacy?
Yeah, um, there's no issues with mail-in pharmacy. Um, you will see, I just switched back to that slide. So there is, um, $0 copay drugs. Um, but generally speaking, the mail order has its own line right there. So if you're using, um, generic drugs that Blue Cross approves for a $0 copay, you can get a 90-day supply with $0. Other than that, your next tiers are listed right there.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem.
So what's your thoughts on this? Are you interested in having, uh, Michelle switch over to this program? And then in your packet, you have the resolution. Uh, if we're gonna change the percentage of what the city's gonna cover, um, we have a resolution in there, and we, we support either way. Right now, we cover 90%, and the staff cover 15, or we could, I'm sorry, 90-10, or we could go to 85-15. So it's, it's up to the council, if you wanna switch, now would be the time, because the premiums are being lowered enough, there won't be much of a notice.
You know, guys, my feeling on this is, we don't play, pay our employees a lot of money. And this insurance is a benefit to them and a way to recruit people at 90-10. But I'm good with that, whatever you guys wanna do, I'm good with. But as the mayor, I support the 90-10 for our employees. Yeah, 90-10, but we switch over to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Okay, keep the 90-10, but switch over to Blue Cross Blue Shield. That's my recommendation, guys.
Laura, if we adopt this, um, uh, how, how long will it take to implement it?
We would start enrolling staff, and it would begin July 1st. We would transfer those over to, on July 1st.
Okay, well, to tell you the truth, I like your, I like your idea. Oh, yeah, I, I certainly do approve that.
Uh, Fred, you got anything, Rep. Paliya?
Some of these guys don't make that much money, guys, so I'm, I'm all good with 90-10.
Good, Fred, Rick?
Yeah, I, um, I'm online with the 90-10 as well.
Are you, Eric? Yeah, you know, and like I said, because we don't, we really don't pay our employees a bunch of money, guys. We give them some good benefits, but as far as comparing to the private sector, we're not even close. But with our insurance and, and our retirements, guys, we're way above that, the private sector. So that's how we use it to recruit people. And, I mean, it's a good recruiting tool. Leave it. All we're, all we're gonna do, yeah, we're gonna, we will say here tonight, we'll make the vote, if you guys wanna go with the 90%, and then they'll print us a new one, and we'll sign down. Okay, that's all. Yes, we're still saving blue, blue money, guys. Yeah. Okay, we're still saving a bunch of money from Maritain. But like I said, this is a, a recruiting tool for us. And like I said, we don't pay much, but our benefits are pretty good. So on that note, I'll entertain to change to Blue Cross Blue Shield at 90-10? Yeah, Blue Cross Blue Shield. I'll entertain a motion.
I, I make a motion that we switch over to 90-10.
Go ahead, Fred, Rep. Paliya.
I make a motion that we switch over to Blue Cross Blue Shield with a 90-10.
Second. Fred, repartee second. Councilor Rick Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Fred Paliya?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, guys. Uh, so we need to pass Resolution 201674, right?
Yes, with the change.
Okay, so let's go ahead, let's change that, let's redo the motion, Fred, to, to, uh, accept Resolution 201674 with the recommended changes for the council.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 20 that, 1674 with a change.
Second. Eric Garcia? Councilor Rorodin?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Garcia? Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you. Mosquito control. Certainly, this one, Laura.
You all have a, you all have a wonderful evening. Let Laura know if you have any more questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Kyle and Lisa. So number nine is mosquito control. And, um, we put a bid out a few years ago, and we only, um, had one, um, one company that put in a bid, it was Roadrunner Public Health. They've been doing what we consider our vector control for many years in, uh, throughout the county, not just in grants. Um, it's time to renew their contract. Our contract allows for us to, um, go up to four years with this company. They've done a wonderful job, they've been very responsive to any needs that we have. Uh, in fact, they, they've already started, they started in February going out and monitoring. They started their applications in March. We, we already have mosquitoes, I couldn't believe, he said, he said we have mosquitoes in March, and then I actually saw some, and I got a phone call today from a citizen who said she saw mosquitoes around her home. So they are out there, and, um, this company is very responsive. So, um, he has kept the same price with us for several years, it is 86,000. And he actually starts in February and goes through, I believe, the summer and then through September. And very responsive, any, any requests we have, they go out and, and put applications immediately. He does some preventive work, um, like treating ground, and then they do the fogging through neighborhoods, and they've also treated some of the athletic fields throughout town.
Is he, uh?
So I'm asking for your approval.
Laura, are they, are they, um, have they started on the golf course? Because there's, uh, you know, as you all know, I played today, and, uh, there's a lot of.
You go, Rick.
There's a lot of mosquitoes out there, so we need to hit the golf.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I know that they've already started, so we can make sure he knows that we've already got a problem there.
Okay, thank you. All right. Same guy that we have last year?
Yeah, same guy, Fred.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the other thing that we're, the other thing we're doing as a city is we're cutting down a lot of the weeds along the sides of the road. Um, he has been very good to advise us, and he said that will help because the mosquitoes nest and breed and all those weeds, and, and then, um, we're sucking up, uh, any standing water that we see throughout town, and then we're encouraging citizens to do the same in their own yards.
And we budgeted for that, right?
We did.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for 86,300 to Roadrunner Public Health, the mosquito control. Go ahead, once.
I make a motion.
Everybody makes the motion. Who's got the second? Eric Garcia's got the second. Councilor Garcia. Councilor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Make my day. Next. We got, uh, City Grants Proclamation, the American Legion Family National Poppy Day. Expressing support for the designation of May 24th as a National Poppy Day in the City of Grants and recognizing the importance of honoring those who have worn our nation's uniform. And whereas poppies are worn and displayed as symbolic tribute to our fallen and the future of living veterans and service members. And whereas at the end of World War I, the American Legion adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom and of the blood sacrificed by the troops who have retired. This symbol, this pop use of the poppy comes from a poem in Blinders Fields, which movingly begins, "In Blinders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses." Referring to the poppies that spring up in the churned-up earth of the newly-dug soldiers' graves over parts of Belgium and France. Whereas the American Legion family has long utilized the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the bloodshed by those who have served in the United States military. And it is a fitting that as the American Legion celebrates its 100th anniversary, they expand the meaning of the symbolism of the poppy. They bring the manner in which the poppy is symbolically showcased in England, Canada, and celebratory fashion on the Remembrance Day. Also known as Armistice Day and Puppy Day. And whereas wearing a poppy will be a national symbol across the country, by showing their patriotism. Whereas May 24th, 2020, would be an appropriate date to designate a National Poppy Day. Now therefore, it is resolved by Martin Higgins, City of Grants, to support the designation of May 24th, 2020 as a National Poppy Day. Encourage all citizens and business citizens in the city's plans to join in observing this day to honor our every service member who has died in the name of liberty, freedom, and democracy. While also showing support for living veterans, service members, and their families. And I am going to sign this right now, just to make Poppy Day May 24th. Any comments on that? I got one. Thank God for all the men that have served in the dice so we can breathe free air. Okay, number 11. Future Foundation Family Center, Laura, you gonna have this one?
Yes. The Future Foundations Family Center Board of Directors contacted myself. For the last probably year, they've struggled with keeping a director or hiring, recruiting a director. And so they just had another director resign this last couple of weeks. And so they're asking the city if they would like to take over the programs. A couple of years ago, the city gave the building to, I mean, if county gave the building to the city. So we actually own the building, but we have a contract with Future Foundations, the nonprofit, to manage it. Our recreation program is already housed there and have been for years. They work together with other departments that are housed there, such as the family center staff and provide programs. So if we were to absorb the Future Foundations programs, it would be the after-school program and some additional summer programs. Currently, they have two staff, a custodian and an administrative secretary. They also have another part-time individual who runs their farmer's market that works during the farmer's market season, a couple of hours here and there. So it would be very easy for us to absorb their, their couple of staff under our rec department and to take over, add, add this after-school and summer programs to our rec department. I think the programs the center provides are very important and they've added a lot for our community. I'm gonna recommend to them that they keep their nonprofit board functioning so that they can continue with our assistance to apply for the various prevention grants that they've obtained over the years. They've, they typically obtain funding for teen pregnancy prevention, alcohol prevention, obesity prevention, all kinds of youth and family programs. And so I think with some of the talent we have currently and a couple of their staff, we could continue applying for that funding. A lot of the applications are fairly simple and they have, we've got two staff on board right now that are very good at organizing paperwork and writing skills where they could do some of the reporting. So it would be my recommendation that we absorb that program.
Any questions?
I got one, Laura. Who, who is currently managing the, the Future Foundations? Or the outfit?
They, it's the Family Center Board and they hired a director. Many of you may remember, I was the director for 14 years before I came over to the city. And I've been here five years. So since I left, they've been through three different directors. And the most recent one was only on for maybe two months and resigned. And so the, they have a, a board of directors of about seven people that are on their board.
So basically, they're independent at this point, right?
They are. They're an independent nonprofit.
So then they would come under, under the umbrella of the City of Grants if we, if we adopt it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But here's my, here's my thoughts on this, guys. These are our kids. This is our town. We have anywhere from 100 to 300 kids that go into that place.
I don't have a clock taking it over. I would like to see them continue with the grants to pay their own way.
But whoever we hire and put there, we will pay the check. Okay. But like I said, these are our kids. We need to continue this program. That's my opinion, guys.
Laura, could you have the Recreation Department run it?
Yes, that's what we do. We would put it under our Director of Recreation and utilize their staff to assist. We'd probably, under the rec, we already hire several part-time people under the rec program to help with basketball and football and various programs. So we might need to hire a couple additional part-time staff for programs periodically throughout the year. Or we would just include it as one of the recreation programs, like we run basketball or
Yeah, like a referee or something.
Right.
Like a referee? Yeah, that'll work. Any other questions?
Modi, why don't you charge OMI rent? How we can pay this guy?
Let's just take that contract, Fred.
I'll drink to that.
Let's get rid of OMI. And then we got $400,000 recurring every, every money, every year that we're not giving away to Denver. That makes more sense than charging them rent.
Well, what happened to, uh,
Their contract will be up next month, guys. We'll have it on the agenda next month sometime, one of the two meetings, I'm sure, right, Laura?
Yes.
Yeah, we're coming up on that, guys. And that's, that's what I want to see happen with OMI. Jacobs, whatever they're called this week. Anything else, Fred? We can charge them rent if you want, bro. Okay?
Foundation, I mean, it's, everything is gonna be run there. There's the baseball program, the football program, the soccer. Everything's run there. I mean, that's all the city. Is that right?
Is that right, Laura?
Yes, it would be facilitated out there. Although, yes, it, it would. Soccer is a different association that does soccer, but we already have several programs. We do the football, the basketball, we have Fun in the Sun, we have quite a few summer programs. And they typically have two. They didn't apply for the Youth Conservation Corps program. So that one won't be available this summer and that hires teenagers to do projects of lasting value in the community. But that's something, the deadline for that's coming up in July. We could work to apply for that again. And it, it provides summer youth jobs.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear, Laura. Because I thought we lost that. And I wasn't very happy about that, because those guys do simple work for us. Any other questions?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion to take over the management of the Future Foundations Family Center.
I'll make a motion that we take over the management of the Future Foundations Family Center.
Thank you, Fred. Second.
My second.
Rep. Padilla with the second. Yes. Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Yeah. Last one on here, guys, is emergency configuration. We're gonna move, we're gonna move forward as long as you guys are in, with this, guys. Any questions? Are we good to go?
We're good to go.
Fred?
I'll make a motion that we pass the emergency configuration.
Second.
The second.
Councilor Magarte? Councilor Garcia? Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Padilla?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys, very much. I appreciate your support and so does the people who stay in Mexico. Laura, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Tom, you can make also, Rick, you got anything?
Yeah, um, you know, after playing golf today with some people that, that played the course and you, as you know, we're, we're open tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yes.
I had a few approach if we're gonna start utilizing the golf course, you know, the golf courses, you, um, is, is not taking advantage of those funds. Is that something that we can implement soon?
What, what are you talking about? Taking care of what funds, Rick?
Golf carts, you know, selling the golf carts to customers.
Oh, yeah, um, I was discussing that with Laura today. And in order to keep the social justice scene, we're looking at maybe next Monday, Rick, depending how it goes. But we're gonna start ran them out to one person at a time. So if there's a few of you playing golf, you'll each have your own golf cart.
Yeah, that's what we were doing when this all first started, right? So.
Okay, so.
Think the city can start using some of those, those monies to bring in.
That'll work. I agree, Rick. And we'll look at it on. Well, I don't know, if you want to, if you're out there more than So I mean, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I've been walking a lot, so a lot of, you know, everybody's walking, but, um, so there's a few people looking forward to those carts being brought out again.
Yeah, nice folks around. We'll look at that real quick, Rick. We'll all, I'll let you know.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else, Fred? You got anything?
I've got a couple of things here. What, Modi, we discussed this on the, on Milan. And the, uh, came in on the, on the, you know, they were paying a, a flat fee and the meter read more and they're going deeper and deeper in debt.
I don't Oh, you're talking about Milan? Where are we at on that one, Laura?
We, um, we need to compare their meter readings to what they're currently paying. We were, we were told we were gonna get meter readings from their side. They had installed their own meter because they thought that our meter was not accurate. And Mark tried to obtain some readings, I believe, in the last couple of months. But I believe they told him that the line had been cut on it, so it wasn't working. So I think I need to sit with our staff and, and look at what they're currently paying compared to the actual readings. And I, I'm gonna guess it's, they're not paying as much as the actual reading show they should be paying.
Oh, I'll guarantee that. They never have. Yeah, Fred, I agree with you. I agree with you 100% on that one, Fred. We need to go ahead and hold Milan accountable.
Okay, another thing, Laura, we have to look at the cemetery. We're running out of plots. I know we finished, we just started filling out the new area. And, uh, in other words, get, get some more property.
Get a new area ready to go.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, if our budget can manage it, we, we need to start lining out the next section. And then in addition, soon, we need to start looking at probably additional property for cemetery plots. The other thing we're considering is purchasing one or two urn, urn walls. I think we could, could, I'm quite, we utilize urn walls that will incorporate several pots, all that are going vertical instead of horizontal.
And you're talking about cremation?
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Yes.
Anything else, Fred?
That's it.
Rick, you got anything?
Um, you know, I talked with Mark, Mr. Tejma, a few weeks back. Are we still, are, are we still budgeting for some of the solar lights for some of the areas that need them? For next, next, next fiscal year?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We're gonna put one on the tank, Rick. And we're gonna put those other ones in your park that you wanted there on that south end of Mesa.
Right.
Because it's working pretty good so far.
Okay.
They've been making a point to get down to the park at night and they light up pretty well.
Yeah, there's a couple other streets where some of the constituents are wanting some off of Ash. Just behind, uh, you know, off of Ash, just off of Roosevelt.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, watch him shaking his head, yeah.
I want to make sure we're budgeting some others.
Yeah, we got $50,000 for that night, I'm Rick.
What's that?
Michelle.
We got $50,000.
Lucy, Chris, Wolf, Doc.
Okay, sounds good.
I have a question for you, Laura.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was wondering if there's anything within the city or, I don't know, appropriate the question is. But, um, you know, the federal government has said that they've passed stimulus money to help businesses. And I know that probably a lot of businesses, maybe they're not, maybe not aware of it. Or maybe we could help them in a certain way by showing them how to apply for federal funding. Because at this point, you know, some of them are losing income, they're, they're closed. And the government's making some kind of revision. I don't know if we could help them in any way in that respect.
You know, as we watch and see how the funding's gonna, in a minute, how the funding's gonna pan out, we, I, I can start checking and seeing if it's possible that we might be able to do some grants through the city. I think I saw where Albuquerque was doing some kind of funding out to their businesses. You know, in reality, rather than pave a road, we might need to try to help our businesses. And that might be a top priority coming for this fiscal year, so I can start working on seeing if that's a possibility. Typically, there's the anti-donation clause. And so, um, typically, we're not supposed to give something without receiving a service. But there may be some kind of way that we can support our businesses. But there may be some kind of way that we can support our businesses. I, you know, I heard that Albuquerque was. So I, I would like to look into that. And we've been, we've been posting on our website and sending out information about any that are coming from the state or the federal level. And so, um, we're getting the information out. And I've heard, I've seen where there's several local businesses that have been applying for unemployment. They've been applying for some of the, the loans that are out there. So we've been trying to make sure to get information out. We've also been trying to get information out regarding mental health services because of, um, some people may be feeling hopeless, uh, due to losing income and various things due to the situation now.
Well, I know for a fact Laura, that, uh, suicide prevention hotline, veteran, and, 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 and. House talk, talk. It's got a, it's got a, it's got a sense of this COVID, sorry, and everybody. It's just, it's just, it's not anybody else's hotline. According to the, to, to.
When you guys are done, I would like something, I would like to say. I've, I've had Chris cut off the live feed. I had Chris shut off the Facebook live feed and I would like to speak to you all for a moment while I have everybody. So, um, I, I wanted you to know that I am the staff at the golf course and, and probably a lot of our staff really support, um, support what the mayor is doing and standing up um, to support our local businesses. We do feel like our, our community needs to open back up. We definitely support that. But the problem that we're having is that the health directive by the governor is seen as a law that she's enacted in an emergency situation. And by asking our staff to open up, you're asking us to break the law. So let's, let's look at this.
Laura, stop right there.
No.
Stop right there Laura. Stop right there. Do not lie. It's not a law. It's an executive order. Period. And violating the constitution of the United States of America Laura.
If the mayor, if the mayor asks me to sell liquor to minors, am I supposed to do that? No. So I, I, I don't feel comfortable making my staff break the law to prove a point with the mayor.
It's not a law. It is an executive order.
And so you gave us an executive order. Is that what you're saying?
They said that they supported it and they did not.
I'm gonna tell you, the golf course is not gonna be open tomorrow. It will not be open.
The golf course is gonna be open tomorrow.
The staff are not showing up. We are not showing up to work.
We will have this discussion tonight.
You can fire all of us. But we are not showing up to work, so.
Okay, that's direct, uh, that's direct, what would you call that? Insubordination. That's directed subordination right there guys.
Because you're telling me to break the law.
Okay? So.
The staff will not be there.
Oh, we're done. We're done. What were your calls, Eric?
Well, I was gonna give kudos to, uh, Mark Teshman's, the paving team. I think, uh, the stuff that he's been doing around, uh, the cemetery. Uh, the roads in there look very nice. You know, the, the road that they started over there at, um, in front of, uh, the old county building looks really well. I think they, they're starting to come a long way where, um, they're learning and our roads are starting to become a little bit better. So I would just give them some kudos. But, uh, go ahead, man.
And thank you. Uh, as far as the council goes, I appreciate your guys' support. Okay? I don't know what my manager's doing. We'll find out here shortly.
Following the law.
Bottom line is, I appreciate your guys' support.
I don't know how to shut this off.
Cause if we, we're gonna lose our republic. That's the bottom line. My comments are, they called everything today from a terrorist to a hero. Okay? A lot of their phone calls, I mean, too. So, I mean, it's just amazing guys. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to end this meeting.
I'm gonna call you a good, uh, nurse.
Laura, you're not beautiful. Second. Counselor Padilla. Counselor Lucero.
Yes.
You guys have a good night. Thank you.